Pledge of Allegiance here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next we come to adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? All right, we have our agenda. Next we come to item two on the agenda, the closed meeting. Would somebody move us into closed, please?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, a move that the Board convene a special closed meeting and in accordance with subsection 2.2-69 affirmatively vote to meet without the superintendent for a portion of the meeting, and that the Board then convene a closed meeting for the following purposes: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular advisory committee appointments, staff appointments, assignments of specific employees, and performance of specific employees, and legal matters under section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding matters requiring the provision of legal advice, specifically matters pending before the Office of Office for Civil Rights.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And we have to do two?
We have to do, does that affirmative vote suffice for our initial meeting?
Yeah, you just start with that.
Okay, all right. Let us, Mr. Anguma is here.
Welcome.
Just moved into closed?
We did?
Yes, we did.
Those were open.
So we are going to go to the adjacent room. Dr. Jones, if you can bust us in.
Yep, oh, yes.
Where is this from?
What's that?
He's in his office.
I've got a pen.
Is Mr. Webb not going to be there?
No.
No, he's still down.
It's the lawyer's side of the table. Justice is going to come out and join us eventually.
Kimball, did you make it through the rain?
Yeah, well, it cleared up.
Are the roads pretty clear?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, would somebody move to go back into open and certify the closed meeting?
Move that we reconvene an open session?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions, all right. Now certification of the closed meeting.
Oh, is he coming back? I think, did you just text Wyatt, or is he coming back?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
His mother-in-law had a crooked hip.
Yeah, this will be faster. And Peter's here, too. They were supposed to go at seven.
Okay, where's the, Jimmy Reedson?
Sure.
Okay, where's the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an informative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where as section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business members matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Yes, Mr. Castillo, Ms. Gill, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Reitinger, Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Now we come to item four on the agenda, advisory committee appointments. Do I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the following advisory committee appointments: Special Education Advisory Committee for term setting June 30, 2019, John Abra Shiamento, Meredith Burke, Stephanie Carraro, Hillary Crockett, Diana Dixon, Andrew Manoir, Lee McClure, Amy Ergerhart, and Jennifer York.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, thank you. Now we'll go to our work session, starting with item 5.01, FCC TV updates.
Okay. Yep. As you remember during the budget this year, we talked about FCC TV and that we may want to be restructuring that with the city, and Mr. Shields and I have, you know, been in discussions and just a little bit of the history. I'm going to kind of do the overview of where we are. We're not taking any action. It's a work session, so this is informational about where we stand as of today and what the city is wanting. And then Peter and John are just going to talk about how we're changing the use a little bit with FCC TV and doing a lot more. So the bullet point sheet that you have in front of you is what I, and Mr. Shields and I met with Ken Feltman, who is, you know, the executive, I'm going to say the executive director, that's not the right, what's president for FCC TV, and we talked about how can we restructure to operate more effectively, because we have struggled with the triparté agreement, Wyatt says since 2001, ever, I mean, or a long time, it just doesn't function well. And part of it is, you have these three different entities, and there was nobody really leading, and so the school board actually gave the management back to the city three years ago, and that was partly because we wanted to see some changes, and the city wasn't quite ready, and they thought, well, let us try to do it our way and see if we can get it to operate and function in a, the way that they kind of had a vision for. They have requested, and they feel like it was better actually if they could get it back on the school side. But there are a couple of things that would have to happen, at least before I would recommend to the school board, that we take it back, because I don't want to have a dysfunctional kind of organization that, again, with the triparté, we feel like we can't function together effectively. So the first section is really just looking at the public side of FCC TV, and what Mr. Shields and I are proposing to their access board is that all of their video classes would actually fall under Park and Rec and be part of their catalog, they would get booked like all of their other classes, which in the past, that's always been a challenge, because they've tried just to run the classes out of FCC TV, it's been hard to get the classes scheduled, who's going to teach it, it's basically a volunteer board, and you just, it's hard to organize. So what we were proposing and are proposing is that it looked just like every other thing that we do in the city, and Mr. Feltman thought that was a good idea. Again, this is very preliminary conversations. On the educational side, we want to move from having open hours from nine in the morning until 10:00 at night, and this is for a couple of reasons. We are the only station that does it like that, everybody else's reservation, so that you know who's coming in, you're not just expected to have your doors open all the time, and this also has budgetary issues. We are running very short on the FCC TV budget this year, and it's because the community has really been calling for the school board, partly, part of the expense, to record our work sessions, like tonight, which we have not traditionally done. We have recorded our meetings and not our work sessions. City Council has done meetings and work sessions, and now that we're doing both, there's not a lot of funding left. It's a lot of recording, and especially since we've been meeting at least once a week. So that's part of the facilities component, and then also having, as far as a reservation system, and Peter will talk about what his class is going to look like next year, where we have designated time in the studio that is for instructional for Mason students. We have a very robust television program at MEH. We've tried for the last couple of years to look at what can we do as part of that whole steam vision, and next year that's on the schedule. So all of that is scheduling, and how the scheduling would change, and that would look a little bit different. And the government side, this is probably the area where Mr. Shields and I have had the most concern, is that right now, and traditionally since the station has been in existence, the money goes to three different pots. The cable board has some, the other money goes to general government, they send some to FCCPS, some to the city, and it has been incredibly challenging to actually know where money is spent. And even on the access board side, about a year or so ago, they did bring in an auditor, try to get, you know, a handle on that, because they had back taxes and some things of that nature that needed to be, needed to be fixed, and even as late as like this last week or so, we went to book the permits for graduation, and the card that they used, their credit card was not functioning, because there's an issue with that. And again, you know, Mr. Shields and I feel like we don't have any advisory board in the city that actually takes in money and actually, you know, has a volunteer kind of effort looking at that, and we would like for that to either be under the city or under the schools, and then when the access board meets, the triparté group comes together, anybody could request a new camera or whatever it is we need, but it goes through the actual, what we would consider school or city purchasing, which means you have those purchase orders before you go out and get something. We know how much it's going to cost, we have the quotes, we've gone about it in that way. And the last couple of years, it's been a challenge for city and schools to actually know between the three different parties what's being bought, so whoever works at the station doesn't just go take the card and go buy a $2,000 camera that maybe we didn't really need. So that finance side is the area that needs more discussion. I will tell you, out of this whole list, Mr. Feltman said that he was very comfortable with it, but the access board would need some work to not feel like they were just losing funding. And then just looking at how we actually get equipment fixed, because for a long time there was not an inventory really in the station, it just kind of, things were bought, and they were sitting in there, and part of that is because there wasn't a really strong governance structure with anybody really knowing who was overseeing it. We now have a much better inventory, and we want to know that when a camera gets broken, here's how you get it fixed, but who's the go-to person that actually would be doing that? So those are some of the bigger issues that we're working through right now with, first of all, with Ken as the president, and then preparing to meet with the access board to see if this new structure actually is something that everybody thinks can work. And then it's a decision for the school board, if the school board wants to actually take back the management of it, and because we, one of the reasons we got rid of it was because initially it was showing up in our budget in community services. So every time we would do our school transfer, when we were going through the budget, it was counting against us, you know, over $200,000, and it was, it looked like in the budget we had 200,000, more than $200,000 to spend on operations for the school that were not school operations, and so the school board basically just gave it back, so we don't want it in our budget. The city took over the management, and it's been on the city's side of the budget. However, this year, for the first year, Wyatt has it sitting in a totally different place. It's not attributed to the city or school, because, you know, I was very expressive, so we can't really even entertain this conversation with the school board unless you can fix the financing side, because we don't want it to go back in and look like we've got another $200,000 that we don't have. So he set that up this year, and now I'll just, I mean, I'll turn it over to John, if you guys want to talk about how you're kind of looking futuristic, what you want to see from the station, and what you're doing next year.
Well, just, excuse me. Good evening. There's a lot of infrastructure that is in place, for instance, this little box right over here, this was put in, in the central office when we moved in here, and it's never been used. It's a dark fiber that goes to the TV station, so the guy here should be able just to plug, plug in and go live, bam, but we've never had it tested or, have the same thing at MEH. We also have it at GM in two spots. So there's a lot of television infrastructure that's out there, but has gone unused, and what I would like to see is for us to shore that up. We haven't been able to, since it's inside of our buildings, it's been kind of difficult getting others enthused about that. But when we do these community meetings at MEH and that kind of thing, we're having to record them and then upload them, and so you generally see them 24 to 48 hours later instead of being able to see it live, like this meeting tonight should be, should be able to be live, and could be live. So that's one of the things that bringing it back under our schools, bringing it back under the schools, we would, we would be able to have more of, more of a say-so in that conversation. There's still a lot of, you know, the inadequate funding right now, you know, they, they cut the budget on it this past year, and these guys who are feeling this right now, they're, they're out some money, too, because we had been keeping the offices open until 10:00 on July 1st, that ends. It'll, it'll, doors will close at 5:00 unless somebody calls and requests it, and then they will be scheduled to do that. It's more efficient, more cost-effective for us, we, and instead of having a manager and a videographer at the TV station, there'll be now two videographers, and then I will, I guess, if it comes to the schools, I, or if it stays with the city, Susan Finorelli, my counterpart would, would then be the supervisor for those two people, and we would be using them more during the, during the day, hopefully shoring up our, all the video opportunities we have during the day, speakers who come to classes, parent one-on-one meetings at night, and that kind of thing. Of course, we'd keep the performances going, but even though it's sitting in this little nice fund now away from the city, city pool of money and the schools pool of money, how do you increase that pool? Who, who helps increase that pool? And that's, that's one thing I think we're still going to have to figure, figure that out as we go, as we go on. So that's, that's the challenge, it's plus, I mean, it's no, no extra staff for us, so it's just, it's more work, but, but the exciting thing is, and the schools have a great plan for using it, they already started this spring, and Peter Lob is with the last, so journalism professor, journalism teacher, rather, in the English Department at Mason, and this isn't a new thing. I mean, this isn't, we're not, this, this wasn't extra money out of the budget this coming year to do what we're doing this fall.
Thank you for letting us get a chance to talk about it a little bit. I can speak from the education standpoint of how we would like to use the studio. So the course offering at George Mason is called, actually, I forget the actual name of the course, Media and Television Production, I think.
Film and Media Production.
Film and Media Production, something like that. And I'll be teaching it in the fall, and the idea that I brought to the table, I guess, is that I know journalism, I have a journalism background, I don't know all of the technical sides of how, which buttons to push when, but I have the, have the background in terms of storytelling and producing good stories, and so I said, there's all this amazing equipment down there, there's a full studio, there's a lot of really awesome resources that our kids could get their hands on. So the idea of the course is that it would be basically a broadcast journalism course, and I can bring to it, you know, the knowledge that I have about teaching journalism. My plan is to operate it the same way I do the journalism class that is already in place at the high school. It's a student leadership structure. The idea is we'd set up editor teams, students would come up with story production, story ideas, they would produce and edit their own stories, their own video packages. We have the capability to do a studio show, like you would watch on your local news. We, you know, as John was talking about, some of the access, there is some access issues at the high school where we can't, you know, sort of pump that into every single classroom, but frankly, my vision is not necessarily that, but to produce a weekly, roughly four to six-minute news show. That can be informative, that can be fun, that can be silly, that can be really creative. The kids are already doing a lot of that right now in the journalism class. I, you know, if you have a smartphone, you're a journalist, and so this is, this is just access to more equipment. The idea being that we would, as you see in the bullet points here, the class is going to meet daily from 9:40 to 11:18 a.m. I think that's the right times with our new bell schedule at high school. That includes our Mustang block. I envisioned it as a place where, you know, for 90 minutes, or 60 minutes a day, we can work on editing, we can sit behind, have kids sit behind a studio, but as the way that the journalism class is run, it's also, you come in, hey, what's your project today? I need to take a camera up to the science classroom, there's a speaker, great, off you go, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for them to go outside the classroom into the community, make a lot of really cool videos to do that. And I think that having the class and having that as an end goal is going to be really excellent for the schools. I'm looking up to the bullet point about master list of certified volunteer producers, students seeking community service and credit hours. It was something I talked with John and with Mr. Clark at the high school about, that, you know, this year at George Mason, they started this externship program for the seniors. We had this week in between exams and graduation where we encouraged seniors to go out and sort of engage with the community. This would be prime material for them. We had a couple of kids down here with Mr. Brett, but we, I think throughout the school year, you can do that. Kids are always looking for community service hours for National Honor Society, for IB, et cetera, et cetera. What a great way to get our students, you know, real-world skills, coming out here and putting a lot more of the community, building up a library with that station, you know, getting, I think, putting the money that comes into the station to good use by building an audience. So that's, that's my plan, as I see it.
One thing, I don't think we've, we've made a point of mentioning regarding the funding, the money used in that cable TV fund is for salaries and benefits. All the cost of purchasing the equipment comes out of your cable bill every month. If you look, one of the little light items there says peg fee, and that's the money that buys the equipment, and it has to go to, it has to go to buy equipment, purchase equipment. So the, as it comes back to the schools, it's primarily just the supervision of these people who are paid by a fund using equipment that's bought by the citizens who pay their cable bill, and that's how the cable access, the peg channel works. It's a lot of, trying to catch you up in 20 minutes, there's little, little honors. Questions? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I've got a few. I had actually two and a half hours with Ken, so 20 minutes was a nice change. One question is, who owns the equipment?
Well, the-
And I know it's not a simple answer, but it's, it's-
That's, that's one of the, one of the great mysteries, too. The, of late, we know exactly who owns it, but in the 10 years prior, don't know. It was just Bob, and the records were shoddy, shoddily kept. We had a supervisor who wasn't, that wasn't a priority. His priority was to do TV, you know, he didn't want to, so it kind of got, it literally was forgotten about, to be honest with you. So if we had to, if we had to yard sale it tomorrow, if you can bring a receipt, you own it, but if you don't, then the city owns it, because in theory, all the peg grant fees, all the city's fees, I mean, they're going to the city, they negotiated the contract. So it comes there, and then it gets split out to the three, to the three parties, so.
And that is the view of the city attorney, but we're trying not to get into that discussion in all honesty.
And so we don't want to talk about that?
To find a better, well, we're trying to, we can, but we're trying to find a workable solution, so.
Okay, I just think that's, that's, if we're going to-
Yeah.
-take the city owns. Responsibility for it, that's a key thing we need answered, not right now, but just for the future.
Right, well, I mean, one thing's really difficult, is one of the things the cable access board paid for in the last two years was this brand-new green screen that's in the studio. Now that'll be, if they wanted to take their bow and go play somewhere else, that would be very difficult to get rid of, you know, because it's, it's a permanent fixture now inside, inside that studio, so.
From the, and I will say, we discussed this actually with Mr. Feltman this week, and from the city attorney's, what she has said to Wyatt, basically, is that, because all of the funds come into the general government, and then they are dispersed from there, that they are general government funds, and they are the funds of the city, you know, the people that live and reside in Falls Church and pay the bills, so, but it's, that's where it gets, it does get tricky, and there's not an agreement. The cable access board does not necessarily agree with that, so.
Right, and it's a three-part agreement between the city, the schools, and FCC TV, and I guess the question is, under this arrangement, would that change? Because as I understand it, if that were to change, then the cable company's commitment to provide funds to buy your equipment could also change.
Well, under what Wyatt and I are proposing is that all of the money goes to either the city or the schools, so that somebody is governing this pot of money, and we don't have what we've had for over a decade where nobody really knew. We know if it's the school component, but the cable access component has not been really regulated, I guess, at all, and what, Mr. Shields and I both feel like it's almost irresponsible for the city to continue in the way that we are now, because we take this money into the general government, we should know where it goes, but because it's been going to this access board as a, as a separate entity, they have, you know, they've been controlling those funds, but it's not really governed in the same way, and we don't have any other organization or group in the city that does that. And Mr. Shields could probably speak to that much better than I could if he were here, but we really need, we feel like the money should go to one pot. We work as a group on running this station and offer the classes that we need, because the role of the access board is not to manage the station, and that's also been, I'm not going to say a point of contention, but we've had to really come to grips, the role of the access board is producing content. It's about people that want to come in and use the equipment and producing content, and that's really what we want to help them get back to doing, taking the classes, they get certified, they can go on the master list, so that then they can use the equipment, and they can book and come do a finance show if they want to do a finance show, or whatever it is they're wanting to produce, but it really needs to be about producing content, and to this date, we're not, that's not what we've really seen. I mean, even over time, the couple of shows that run on Falls Church TV, you know, is Mr. Shields, and we discussed it again openly this week, they don't really benefit necessarily the people of Falls Church. It's not, they're not produced for Falls Church, where we would like to see more production and things that our community could really, you know, benefit from. So that, I mean, that's part of the looking forward, is getting them to actually produce content, which we haven't had.
We've had a lot of interest of late from the folks at Creative Cauldron, for instance, who would like to have some of their programs, their shows, you know, on the, on cable, I mean, we do have a cable channel, but, but these days it's more of the on-demand content that's the most usable by anyone.
And who would deal with, like, licensing and rights issues and something like that? Would, would that be something for Mr. Horne to take on, or?
For public access.
I'll take it on new stuff.
For public access, are there licensing and rights issues? I honestly don't know.
Haven't, haven't had, had that cross my desk yet on that. We do have questions of performance rights, like when our bands do the performances or whatnot, we put it up on YouTube, they can stay on YouTube, and they're allowed to be heard on YouTube, but we also have to say, yeah, it's okay, you can also run ads on the, on the video as well. That's the, but the ads aren't, because we're in education, because we're part of the education Google, Google apps for education, the ads are much more appropriate than some of the ads you would see on normal YouTube. We also own a Vimeo account, so we could put it up there and not, not deal with that, but.
Ms. Gill. I just had two questions. When do we need to decide what we're going to do?
Well, you know, Mr. Shields really wanted us to do it during the budget, and we just, this is just not something that we could take on with doing our regular school budget. They would like for us to have it by July 1st, but again, you know, I've expressed that that is not, it's not a viable option, right? So I think it'll just be when we have time to ask all the questions and updating the board on where we are, and it's really deciding, is this something that the board is willing to entertain? You know, John, I think, feels like we could manage it, and we could get some benefits from it, we do see, and I have always seen great potential for our high school, but I didn't want it if I couldn't get us there, and at the time, when we got the station back, I had tried for over two years, and, and we just, we couldn't, it was taking up too much time, and we weren't in a place where it was going to be productive for us. We think we're in a different place now as far as being able to manage. John and Susan Finorelli work really well together as well, you know, between city and schools, so, you know, where the money lies, I think, is more of just a formality, because they meet as a group, they decide what they need in the station, but-
So we could, we could decide at our next meet, we don't have to decide tonight?
Yeah, I didn't have it as a decision tonight, I just wanted to find out what questions you have, and because so many of you were not on the board when we gave it back, I didn't know what history you even know about it, and, you know, we were happy to get rid of it when we got rid of it, and so it's, and Mr. Shields understands it's a big deal for us to consider even taking it back, because it is management, it's something else that we're, you know, governing, but if it's great for students and has those benefits, and we think that that's going to be good for us, then we're supportive of it.
So I might add a second question. What is, what is the barrier to using these, like, why can't we just plug into it? Like, why, why do we have these and we don't use them, and how can we start using them?
Good, that's a good question.
Okay, but I mean, that's, that's my main question.
I've just, I've always, Dr. Jones will tell you, and Dr. Billon before her, I have always been an advocate of, you know, you know, we put these in, why didn't, why haven't we used them yet?
I mean, is it just a matter of getting the right cable? Like, I'm just trying to figure out, what is the barrier, like, what do we have to do to get it?
There's some electronics involved.
Great, but like, what are, like, what are, like, can we figure that out? What's the barrier to figuring that out? So because live streaming, I think, would be, I mean, when I was on vacation, I would have tuned in.
Really?
I would- I would, I would have tuned, I tried for an hour to find this online, I tried to tune in, and I would tune in, but, you know, so if we can, if it's just a matter of, like, Harry Shovelin over here and-
Let me, let me, one of the, one of the, one of the answers to that is also under the unanswered issues, and that is, our IT staff are great at networking, but they're not video engineers.
Yeah.
So we've got to find somebody who is a video engineer. Alex works for, for instance, we could, he's a great guy, and we can bring him in for a couple of hours, and we can figure out all this stuff. But that's, that's been one of the hamperings that we've had, is that we have two engineers that work for the station, one of them works full-time for Fairfax, the other for Arlington, and they come over, out of the goodness of their heart, when they can and when they're not busy, but they're, they're generally very good.
So can we have a community volunteer? I mean-
Well, you're hitting on the issue, it's been a very antiquated station, and so, you know, and we said this five years ago, and four years ago, that all of our operations are like a decade old in this station, and so we weren't live streaming, we weren't able to do some of those things, but I think if it has, if it was on our IT side, we have the expertise to be able to do it, and I think the city thinks of us as being a little bit more progressive, just because of the type of IT that we have, we have to be, but. So I think we'd be more likely to get us into the 21st century if it was on the school side, but.
The state, the studio's been equipped for HD, and all the equipment is there for the studio. It's still in boxes, because they have nobody to install it yet, and that's been, that's been one of the issues. And, and my argument has been, with the pay agreement, you know, why can't some of the peg money be used to install it? I mean, certainly you can buy equip, you buy a refrigerator at Sears, and they come and install it for you as part of the price, you know, is that not capital expenses? But apparently not, if it involves a human being, so.
So if it came back to our side, we can make those decisions. We could say, listen, we're gonna, we're gonna find somebody to come in, they're gonna, they're gonna put the HD equipment in that we've already bought, we're gonna hook up these boxes that we've already bought, and we're gonna move into the 21st century and livestream our stuff.
Well, that's what we need to be, to make clear, because the problem we had last time was, we were, in effect, getting dinged for having a responsibility of it, and we weren't getting the benefit. So, we need to figure out, you know, who's gonna control the money, who's gonna own what, and, and have it more focused than it was before, because I felt like what we did was, we were criticized for having it as part of us, and we weren't getting any of the credit for taking responsibility for it.
And we had the money before, but we had joint management, and that was the problem. We didn't agree on, and I say agree, on that we were operating effectively or not. And so, we had a big meeting about, do we want to make some changes? And it was either, okay, if we're not gonna make the changes, then you guys just take it, and so you can try, see what, if it works for you, and so that's what we did. And if we restructured this way, there's one organization, which is either city or schools, so that also the people that work there know who they're working for, because that was a big issue before. It was difficult to have two or three buses.
Ms. Writing?
So, I hope I'm not the voice of negativity, but I'm at no, and it would take a fair amount of work to get me to yes. And not because I don't believe that the, the benefits that Mr. Loeb indicated, in fact, I've, I've loved what MEH has done with video announcements, and I see all of the academic potential, but, this is the but, running a TV station is not commission for schools. It's much more commission for the general government. It feels to me like the TV station ought to be run by the general government. I can see reasons not to do that, but I would want to, as a school board member, be assured that we had the bandwidth to manage it, you know, pun intended.
If this takes some of Hunter's time, and this takes some of Tom's time, and it takes some of your time, you know, we already were shot down, because we didn't have enough money from the general government to hire a project assistant that we desperately needed, because our central office staff were overworked. And time is the biggest problem that we've got. So, I would want to be assured that the, we did have, if we had responsibility, that we had control, and that for all of the non-educational, I mean, we'll pay for the core educational mission parts of that, and we probably ought to. I think this would be a huge addition to what the Lasso could do, and what could be done at George Mason. But that's gotta be paid for. It's not a part of our budget, it's a part of the general government's budget, much like, you know, they claim, excuse me, I'm getting, much like, it is asserted that transportation expenditures are not a part of the general government, but this is, this is separate. I think we could run it if we had the resources to bring on the external people, and we had the management capability to oversee it in the right way. But I haven't, I haven't, you know, that sounds like a lot of unanswered questions right now. If you asked me to vote on this right now, based on what I know, it would be, no, no, bang your shoe on the table, no. But I, I think we could get there, but there's gotta be a lot more, and there's gotta be a dedicated non-school funding line that not only pays for the people, but provides some management overhead if the schools are gonna take it on, in my opinion.
And I do just want to say, too, this will, the decision doesn't impede Peter's class. That class will be operating next year, the equipment's there, so that part of it, we feel like we, we've got, so, and I appreciate your comments, because it is, it is another component to organize and run.
Just to, just, not to tell two stories, and I know we've got people waiting for public comment, but what makes startup businesses successful is they focus on one thing, and they do one thing. And there are parts of this that are not education, and, you know, we're going through a lot of difficult times, there's a lot of disquiet, we need to focus on the educational mission more than anything else, and so we'd have to, I think, overcome that.
Thank you, Ms. Writing. Are there questions or comments? I guess I would ask just one question, going back to Mr. Loeb, your statement, if you've got a smartphone, you're a journalist. If we were creating a new capability, would it look like what we're talking about here today? Or is this kind of a legacy enterprise that we're trying to figure out what to do with?
It's a little bit, the physical studio's a little bit of a legacy enterprise itself, and that's not necess, the green screen is really nice, but one could buy a green piece of fabric or paint a wall green, and you have a green screen. What is really cool is that infrastructure is, is not what I can do necessarily with my smartphone, and I can't do it with quality to the degree that I think the city of Falls Church and the school boards would want it to be. There's a lot of really awesome equipment in there, and there's a lot of, the cameras are of higher quality. I think that, I think if you, your question about, if there was no studio, and I came before you and I said, we should have a broadcast journalism class at the school, I've, I've visited this year, actually, I spent time visiting area high schools to see what they do. A lot of high schools have a television studio that is just their own. It's not under the same mission, as you said, that, like, the city of Falls Church seems to have, it just happens to be at the studio, and like, there's some guy in the IT department who makes sure that the cameras work. So that exists, and that's cool, but it's not essential. I think, I think I would say to you, just provide a physical space where students can work on broadcast journalism. There is a lot of really awesome HD equipment that allows for the type of editing that you would expect out of a television news show, and that's a valuable education experience. Is it an essential, like, we must have this to teach broadcast journalism? No. But is it something that's like, if that funding is there, if we're capable of doing that, yeah, absolutely, these, teach these kids how to do all of that, because if they ever do set foot in the media landscape, that's what they're gonna be doing, is using professional-grade equipment, and that's a pretty cool opportunity for them to be able to do that.
Yeah, I guess I'm, and I guess the, well, two things. First of all, I think this is a great capability, but if it's coming, you know, if it's a little bit of a white elephant that we're getting, you know, white elephant in the sense that it's really cool, but it, it takes a lot of care and feeding, and, you know, that's the, the classic story, the Thai king, if he wants to ruin somebody, he gives them a white elephant, because the, the maintenance is a complete bankrupting nightmare. And, and I think if this, this has to be right-sized to what we need to do, and is it big iron like that over there, or is, is the GoPro world and things like that, is that gonna give you 80% of the capability at 20% of the cost?
I think part of the legacy thing that's interesting to me is that, that money that comes from the peg grant is exclusively for equipment, and as John was alluding to, that's, in the 21st century, that's not necessarily where the cost needs are, right? So I think that's tough to think about when you're, when you're, from my perspective, when you're planning a course, what do I physically need versus what, you know, what do I, there's a lot of non-physical needs that we have, or at least it's become a lot cheaper. So in some ways, the money that comes in does represent a legacy, but as long as it's coming in, let's put it to educational use.
Yeah, and then I guess, you know, with respect to incremental personnel for video engineers, for X hours of your time, Y hours of your time, Z hours of somebody else, I think that, that has to be something we scrutinize a great deal. And I guess the other, the other question for you, Dr. Jones, is, so if we say, thanks, but no thanks, what happens?
It continues to exist the way that it does today.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
I wanted to mention the two personnel who work full-time for the station. One was a former teacher of broadcast at Arlington Career Center, Andy Crowe, and then we've got Genevieve Lemay, who's back, she'd worked for Discovery, and she's now back with us. So, I mean, we've got, we've, we, there's some good talent there, and, so, even if we don't go for it, we'll, we still can probably do some of these things, you know, I really, you know, I really want to get those things done, you know.
Okay, great. All right, well, we have on our agenda that we have a hard stop to go to public comment at 8:45. We also have a survey update issue. I would entertain a motion that we proceed to public comment and then have the survey update subsequently, or something more, what are your thoughts?
That makes sense.
All right?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Peter, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry you had to wait on us, too.
All right, we are now at the public comment. Are there public comments slips out there? Are we going to use, there they are. All right, Ms. Rice, you are at the head of the line.
Yay!
So step on up to our virtual podium, and-
Actually, because he doesn't need it, he just-
In accordance with our bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be select, submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. And with that, welcome.
Thank you, Christina Rice, 106 South Lee Street. This morning, I learned that the Special Education Advisory Committee members were appointed, and I noticed that three former members were appointed, had applied and were appointed, and I had some concerns about that. I did not apply myself, I did not care to continue with unwarranted abuse by some of these people, and I now have opportunities to join other community groups, parent groups, that will help each other address special ed needs and woes, and provide the camaraderie and support needed, emotional and otherwise. The reason I'm concerned about this is the committee, its main purpose is to determine, to do outreach, to determine what the needs of special education students are in the division. And that's really all they're there to do, they're to communicate these needs, they're also to perform a few other functions, like approving the Special Education Director's annual report, and provide a few other pieces of information throughout the year. The three former members that were reappointed were very uncomfortable throughout the two years that I worked with them, with the public nature of the committee, and did what they could to suppress other people's opinions. Two of these individuals, men, were very nice men, one of them is friends, child is friends with my daughter, I get along with them quite well. However, in two years, Andrew Manwaring did not express any opinions or give any input whatsoever, John Abrachimento did not follow through with any outreach. He seemed to enjoy coming and getting the information, and so I think highly of John in other areas, but it was not a productive relationship on the committee. And then third, Hillary Crockett constantly broke Virginia Open Meeting laws and had no regard or respect for Robert's rules, even though she was instructed and trained many times. And she mixed political activity with committee business. She took it as her forum to address members online, and we were trained under Virginia Open Meeting laws, that we were not to have any debate or discussion, that the public did not have access to online. And there were some individuals that tried to show the committee how to get around that, but I am asking for you to provide training on Robert's rules and Virginia Open Meeting laws, not through your committee chair, but through a more official expert trainer, and provide that accountability. And I hope that you will urge-
Thank you, Ms. Rice, sorry, time's up.
I hope that you will urge the committee to follow the spirit of Virginia Open Meeting laws.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Next up is Allison Kuchma.
Hi, good evening, Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue. I think by, by now, everyone on the school board's aware of a lot of the issues that the school district is facing, and I find that the community is discussing, and I'm asking you, as school board members, to actively be part of the solution. You all know what the problems are, so either be actively part of the solution, or the community is gonna perceive that you're part of the problem. And that's just how it, how it works. I have meetings at my house, and parents sit down in my kitchen, and I'm thinking, I'm not even on the school board. Are you in John's kitchen? Are you in Margaret's kitchen? Are you in Justin's kitchen? Sharing the details of what goes on in special education, the challenges that people face, the lawsuits, the mediation, the barriers, I, I just want to be about solutions. And, and I think that if you're gonna sit on this board, I, I need to see that you're actively being part of the solution, or you're part of the problem. And we need solution seekers, they, the solutions can be in various forms. Right now, the, if it's not obvious to you, the school district is, has a real issue with leadership right now, and either you know it, or you don't know it, or you're denying it. And it, at the end of the day, denial and putting it off isn't gonna help our kids. And I, I'm just asking you to remember why you ran, Margaret, why you ran for school board, was that you pledged to help kids. And I just ask you to put your ego aside, and, and just sit down and dig deep and say that, at the end of the day, you know, Justin, this is what we're asking you, and we want you to, to listen, and, and I would like to hear that there's been a meeting at your house instead of mine, and, and we're figuring out solutions together, we're, we're on the same team. And, and I just, you know, I, I think that what Falls Church did with this Fiat Committee sends a huge message. If you don't think that people across the country are watching, they are, and it's disgusting that, that a woman that orchestrated with our liaison behind the scenes to throw a sitting chair off for reasons which have never been explained, and she is reseated, that just defies, but of course, it speaks to kind of what's going on here. And you either want it to continue, or you want it to stop. Either you're part of the problem, or you're part of the solution, and it's really your choice. John and Justin, it's your choice, be part of the solution, or you're part of the problem. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. Next up, we have Amy Trombo.
As Hunter knows, I've got bad news and good news. The bad news is, there's a thunderstorm, my daughter's dive meet got canceled, I have two dozen brownies that I don't want to stay in my house. I am desperately trying to raise funds for the Technology Students Association, we're still a few bucks short, and so brownies, take some home to your kids, give donations to TSA, it's, we were trying to come, I guess, redirecting, it's not really recycling, repurposing the brownies, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trombo.
Public servant.
All right, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, now we will go to item 5.02 on our agenda, the survey update, Dr. Jones.
Yes, if I might invite Erin Kelly and Ty Harris Ford, and first of all, let me apologize to them, this is much later than I had told you it would be. It's always hard to time these meetings, so thank you for your patience with us. When we were thinking about-
And it's, it's our fault.
And it's our fault, not hers.
When we were thinking about the survey results, we were trying to debate on who the best person to present would be, since they are both, two of our principals that will be inheriting these results and really digging in and taking a look at them because they'll be leading their buildings next year with our two new principals. We thought that they were very fitting to do so for us. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay. We are here to present data on the TEL survey that was administered to faculty members. TEL stands for Teaching, Empowering, Leading, and Learning. Background information that we are going to provide is provided by the New Teachers Center. This is a nonprofit organization that strives to help new teachers, help schools, school districts, collect data, and also disseminate that data so that proper decision-making can take place. The survey that our teachers took specifically designed for teachers, the questions were aligned with things that impact their daily work and things that were relevant to their practice. So a little history. The survey was first used by, actually, I think it was Governor Easley in North Carolina back in 2002. And he administered the survey to gauge working conditions for his staff. Over time, this survey became something that people participated in more and more, and they got greater value. Obviously, as you can imagine, whenever you administer a survey, your hope is that you'll have a high participation rate. North Carolina saw an increase in participation, and that helped them to be able to make more informed decisions. Since then, the survey has been validated as part of the GATES M E T project. And then multiple tools that are linked to the survey have also become available to school divisions and anyone that goes on to administer the survey.
Sorry. Quick question. M E T stands for?
Honestly, I don't know what the M E T is.
All these, T L A.
Yeah, I know. I know.
T M I.
Measures of Effective Teaching Project.
You already know that...
What is it? Measures of Effective Teaching Project.
That makes sense, doesn't it?
Yes.
As with any survey, you know, you want to have a large pool. With this specific survey, they're certified educators, and the data is shared with the teams. And so I guess Dr. Jones received the data and then...
They've got it all on Board Doc's side, too.
Okay. So then everybody, everyone has the data.
And the principals reviewed it.
And we got an opportunity to look at it a little bit. And, you know, we will take this data at the building level and discuss it with our staff and, you know, grow as we need to. So what does, like, why would we administer this survey? First of all, it's widely utilized across the United States. There's a strong reputation. Comparable data is available. I can tell you that this survey was administered in Fairfax as well as Alexandria recently, within the past three years, both of those places. Affordable, I don't know what the cost is, but apparently it's affordable and scientifically crafted in the sense that it does follow your traditional model for a survey with strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, strongly agree, that, so on and so forth.
Okay. So the survey for us is something that is statistically valid and reliable, and it's designed to assess whether educators have working conditions in their school that support effective teaching. So the key to that is that it supports the effective teaching. So it was just a survey for the teachers. So the support staff didn't take the survey, and in my building, that's half of the staff. So I think that it kind of depends what you're going for with it. But the questions were, I mean, they were geared more towards teachers, but I think that we need to keep that in mind as we go through the results, that it's not a climate survey or a morale survey because it's just assessing their ability to do their job and how they feel about doing their job. So it's not about specific policies, and it didn't provide any information as to why teachers chose the things that they did. And with our teachers, that was something that they were very uncomfortable with. In fact, I think a couple of them were writing or did write a letter to the board to explain some of their choices because if they found things that they weren't sure what a question meant, there was then no opportunity for them to respond to that. However, it needs to be valid, and you can't have responses for your data to be valid. So I can see both sides of that. So through this, we are just trying to create a dialogue and give the leadership and the administrators some kind of starting point for a conversation. But I think that the leadership will need to look at these results and ask questions to dig deeper into why we got some of the ratings that we did, because the survey itself won't tell us that. So the way the survey worked, there were eight constructs or themes that the survey creators felt linked to teacher retention and student achievement. So these are the eight different themes that they used. And what the teachers were given were statements in each of those areas, and they had to decide their level of agreement. Like Ty said, they had to choose whether they strongly agreed, the whole way down the spectrum to disagreed. So the constructs talked about these different things. So when they're talking about use of time as a construct, we're talking about time to plan, time to collaborate with colleagues, and their instructional time during the day. Facilities and resources are obviously the physical space of the facility, but also instructional technology, communication from the office, and school resources. Community involvement and support is pretty self-explanatory. Managing student conduct is both the policies and the practices in each building, so it asked questions about both of those. Teacher leadership was the teacher's involvement in leadership, but also their impact that they feel on decision-making in the classroom and school level. So it was all very school-based questions. The school leadership, again, was at the school-based level. Did the leadership create trusting environments, supportive environments, and did they address teacher concerns? Professional development, how available was it and what quality was given? And then instructional practices and support, did the teachers have the data to form their instruction? And then the support, if they needed help with a particular issue in terms of instruction? So those were what the questions were getting at. There were a lot of questions for the teachers that fell into all of those areas. So our respondents at FCCPS, we had very high participation. Overall, our average was 84.5 percent, with oddly GM and MEH both being at 71 percent, and both elementary schools both being at 100 percent participation. So we thought that was great.
And I can't tell you why it was only 71 percent at the secondary level. Both schools, I know for a fact, gave plenty of time for teachers to pick up the code that they needed to complete it. We reminded teachers, you know, hey, don't forget to, you know, submit the survey. And so we had to dig a little deeper to be able to tell you why. But 71 is a decent response rate.
Yeah. And the timeframe that they were given to take the survey was about a week between when they had to pick up the code and then take it. So in our building, I actually hunted people down and gave them the survey code as kind of a reminder that, hey, you have this if you want to take it. So that might be why our, there were people that I guarantee would not have picked up that code in time if I hadn't given them that gentle reminder. Jesse Thackeray is not reported here because they didn't have enough staff members. So that is something that I think moving forward, we would need to consider because reading the survey directions, they knew they didn't have enough staff members to generate data through this reporting process. So they had teachers that said, well, why would I even take it? Because I know it's not going to be reported. So then even though they only have five teachers, only three of them took it because they knew the data wouldn't be reported. So that's unfortunate that we didn't get their information, but I think that that's a flaw of the company.
And I will say, I'm still working with the company on that, trying to determine because today I reached back out to them because the number seven showed up somewhere. So I think they may have seven that took it, but it's like they've got all these blanks. So if you have seven people and they skip questions, or so there's something with their report, I can tell you what their overall number is at the end, but, and it was fine, but it's, they just don't have the same reporting because they don't have the people.
Do you know if Jesse Thackeray was included in the district as a whole? Or were they...
Yeah. Anybody that's system-wide or like Thackeray, when you see the whole FCCPS is in there.
Okay.
Yeah. And you'll see it on the last slide, actually.
That, I think, is something that was hard for a couple of our people that are in multiple buildings, since it was so building-specific. They were coming to me and asking, well, which building should I answer the questions based on? And their survey code said which school their data was reporting to. So I said, well, if you have a survey code that says us, then you should answer the questions based on us. But they didn't have the opportunity to do it for every building. So some of those outliers might...
And I will tell you that all of the buildings called for more codes because they went through Marty. So if they were a teacher that taught a little bit at Thackeray and a lot of Mount Daniel, they switched their code. So, I mean, they would call Marty and then get a code from that building.
And we tried to work with each other to make sure we didn't give double codes. And we still had some of those people that were in multiple buildings that they were the ones that I was assuming. You gave one, too, and you were assuming I gave one, too, and then they didn't have one at all. So that's why we had to call Marty. So there were some people that were, even on the professional staff, that didn't quite fit into this, that we would, if we really wanted to use this moving forward, I think, want to find a way to get their input as well.
Interestingly, they could take it twice, but because it was funding-based, every survey cost. So we would have to go back and cost it out differently if we were going to have X amount of people that take it twice for different sites. Because some of our staff are at all the sites.
Yeah. Well, and we had 100 percent participation over the weekend, and I thought, hmm, I still have three codes in my office, so I don't know how that happened. I don't quite know how that worked out, but we got the message that we had 100 percent. And I know for a fact it was not 100 percent of our people. So some of that was a little interesting. But here are some of the results. Now, before we start, the results are rounded to the nearest whole percentage. So if you're adding them up and it doesn't quite add up, that's why, because it just was too hard to read if we didn't have the rounding.
All right. So the calculation's done at the respondent level and then aggregated. And this, we're talking about the rate of agreement, and so that is defined as someone marking either agree or strongly agree. So that would fall under the amount that's reflected in our data. There are eight constructs, as Erin pointed out, and then there are items, multiple items within each construct. And so to get the rate of agreement, you add the agree, the strongly agree for each item, and then the average is what the rate of agreement is. So the example given there, if you have agree and strongly agree for four of the eight items within one construct, that comes out to be a 50 percent for the overall construct. Okay. So the eight constructs, and there you see the figures there are at the division level. Basically, what you're looking at is the higher the number, the greater the satisfaction with that construct. That's the easiest way to look at it. So as you can see with community support and involvement, very high. Facilities, high. Managing student conduct and instructional practice and support are high. Professional development, probably the lowest, or it is the lowest there. And as we, we'll show you a school-by-school breakdown for all of these, so you'll get a better understanding of kind of what these buildings look like. We can tell you that there are, there is data that skews the overall, as there often is whenever you're dealing with, you know, multiple entities. And so here's the school breakdown for the same eight constructs, without going over every single thing you can look and see, and people can access this, obviously. You know, the community support and involvement is critical, and we know that. I'm happy to see that those figures are so high. It says a lot. And, you know, I think as we continue to move forward and achieve the things that we all want to achieve, those numbers have got to stay at least at that level. Now, as we compare our data, the same things you were just looking at, when you compare it to Alexandria in 2016 and Fairfax in 2014, on the far right, that's at the state level with the state of Massachusetts. You kind of get an idea of how we size up with comparable divisions.
So is there no figure for Virginia? I mean, why Massachusetts?
We're just like, we're only the third. Like, there's Alexandria, Fairfax, and I think it's just us. So we don't, we didn't have a Virginia figure.
That's basically his Virginia.
So you actually have Alexandria. So you have Alexandria, Fairfax.
Right.
And then the reason that we chose Massachusetts as well was because if you look at Education Week where they're ranking, you know, states, they're always highly ranked in regard in the United States on the East Coast, and we felt like it was very similar to northern Virginia, not just Virginia, but trying to find a state that would be comparable to us.
Right. And so we know, for example, that North Carolina administers this survey, but that is not a comparable, you know, situation for us. So particular strand, school leadership and school culture, you know, the feeling, and this is, it's something that we need to, you know, take an honest look at. The numbers don't lie here. We see that one school is not where we want it to be, and I think it's a clear message that we all need to work together to help that school get to where the other three schools are. As we look at the atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, I think that it's also, you know, an indicator. And, you know, there's no point in avoiding the discussion. It is what it is. I can tell you that Erin and myself are ready, willing, and able to do everything we need to do to help our middle child, you know, get to where they should be. But we thought it was important that we just show this data and, you know, address it head-on.
Okay. So one of the things that teachers were asked to talk about was factors that influence their decision-making about their professional plans. And they were able to, again, agree or disagree with this thing is something that would influence my plans to stay or leave a position. So what we've done for this slide is pooled the top four or five with MEH, because you were overachievers and had five that were all the same, for each school site. And the one thing that is interesting is that at MEH and Mount Daniel, we had a very high rate of agreement on what is important to those teachers. So all five of MEH's areas were a 97 percent of agreement. Almost all of their staff had the same feeling about all five of these things being the top reasons why they wanted to stay. And at Mount Daniel, we had 100 percent agreement on these top four things. So, I mean, that for us at least tells me that those two buildings are on the same page. And if you look at the other buildings, their level of agreement was very high, too. Even TJ was in the 90s for those. So what teachers are telling us is important for retention is pretty clear by this, which I think is going to be helpful as we move forward. So some things, some trends in this data.
Erin, I think you have a question.
Yeah.
I have a question on this specifically because I had some time, only about an hour or two this afternoon, to dig through the data. And the thing that surprised me the most was when I was looking at the comparison to Fairfax, the time to do your job during the day wasn't asked in 2014, but it was in 2012, and it was only 50 percent. And what I don't know about time to do my job during the workday is, what does that response mean? There was, does it mean that people are concerned that they don't have enough time? And that's why it's important to them, whereas it was, you know, if the similar factor was only 50 percent in Fairfax, because they feel a lot of pressure to do multiple things.
Right. I think that, at least the way our staff viewed it when we talked about it afterwards, was that that would be, if they felt like they were having to take a lot of work home, that would be something they would consider wanting to leave. But whether or not they're happy with that, I think we would have heard about it by now, honestly. I think that our staff feels that they want to have the time during the day to do that. And since we don't have a very high retention rate, then I think that we're meeting those needs. Because at most of the schools, we...
You mean a higher...
High, high...
Yeah. I was like, we do.
We do. We have a high retention rate. So then people are happy about that. But if they felt like they were doing a lot outside of the school day and it was too burdensome, then that would be something they would consider leaving for.
I think additionally that duties are factored into that as well. I know that's something that our teachers routinely state as something that they appreciate, is that they're not asked to do, our teachers don't do, don't have duties. They don't have bus duty.
That's unusual.
They don't have lunch duty or after-school duty. They can do their job, their planning is their planning time, and they've said that. So I don't know... So I, now, I don't know 100% if that's exactly what they meant by that. But I can tell you that's been the feedback.
If I might add too, I think to that point, when we were vetting this, looking at the survey data and talking about what can we do better next year, we really think having like Lisa or the HR staff go out, present all of the questions just to make sure everybody is coming from the same frame of reference, so that we all had the same interpretation, would actually make it better.
Yeah, I do think that would help us, because our teachers got into a lot of, well, what do they mean by this question? And how do they want us to answer that? And I think that if they just had a conversation about, well, this is what the question means, then they can formulate their own opinion. But I think they got a little bit into, well, what are they really trying to ask me? And got a little into the weeds with some of the wording and read into the questions a lot.
Statistically, that's why it's scientifically valid, because that's what they do all across the country.
Right, exactly. So some of the things that stood out on this is the time to do my job during the workday. At three of the schools, that was on this list. Effectiveness with the students I teach also showed up at those same three schools.
Actually, four.
And then teaching assignment, I think that that was something that makes sense for GM and MEH, because there is a lot more change in teaching assignment from year to year when you're teaching a subject and a course instead of a grade level. Honestly, I think that would be very important to the teachers at my building, but they don't worry about that. So last year, you might have a different response from the teachers at Mount Daniel. But that's not even something that's on their radar. A couple of things that were interesting that they were not on here more was class size only came up once and salary only came up once.
Actually, twice, MEH, TJ.
Sorry, you added that one down there. But those were not things that were up there as much as maybe we had thought through this budgeting process.
That's probably because you focused on that. So people are seeing that the school board is committed to those two things.
Right. Are there questions about this one? There's a lot on here.
Is that, does this, is there going to be a comparison with other school districts on this one? Or is this?
No, there's a whole lot of indicators. So when you open this up, you'll be able to see, there's a bunch, like, I want to say 20 odd that you can look at. We can certainly provide that for you if you'd like, but they're.
It's just, it's just really interesting. I think it bears some, some thinking about, I mean, you're right. It could be that the salary and class size is the dog that didn't bark, just because it's kind of assumed. But I would, it's, it definitely takes some thinking, so.
I wouldn't, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't read too much into that, though, because salary was still at 90.6% across the section. And class size was only down at 87.8.
But what I think is interesting is there are so many other issues out there that are top of mind for people that we need to be more aware of as well. So it's a much more nuanced, it's not just, I want to make a competitive wage in a class, in a class size that's lower than 40. So it's, it's just a little more nuanced, I think, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly true that across the whole school system, empowerment to influence decisions, support from school administration, collegial atmosphere across staff, and effectiveness with the students I teach were all rated more highly than either salary or class size.
Sorry, keep going.
No, that's good. So these are items that we felt kind of spoke to areas of particular interest that are out there in our community and in our schools and for the leadership and for this group, some things that we have been talking a lot about this spring. So we wanted to put these numbers up there for you. Teachers are recognized as educational experts as one. And as you can see in most buildings, the rates are pretty high for that. There was one outlier for that one. Teachers are trusted to make sound professional decisions about instruction. Again, those numbers are similar to the top, those kind of go hand in hand. If you're an educational expert, then you're going to be trusted to make professional decisions. So those, those numbers are very similar as well. Selecting instructional materials was higher at the upper grades and a bit lower at the, at the lower grades. And one thing that we had talked about in our meetings with the principals and with Dr. Jones was that something with the instructional materials is a lot of the people that helped select materials that perhaps we're not happy with right now, like the math curriculum, are no longer here and are not the people that were taking this survey. So is it that they weren't involved and they didn't know? Or did they really not have a say if that question was brought up? I do think, I was honestly surprised to see that high of a number for Mount Daniel. But I think that when we were selecting the new writing curriculum this year, they did feel like they were more included than in the math adoption. And so that could be why that number is higher than the other elementary number, because that was something that had been of concern. And now, based on the 81%, doesn't seem to be as much. So I think that you guys did a good job with that, with that process and really listened to them. And I think that tells us that they felt that. And then devising teaching techniques.
You really do say that, that's why it's so interesting.
It's the same process. Well, I wasn't, I didn't do the math, so I don't.
And I wasn't here for math.
But I did, and I watched it all.
But the benchmark literacy, the reading for balanced literacy, and the writing process were exactly the same.
I do think part of that, though, at TJ is reflecting, the math, people don't like the math curriculum. And it was, it was selected in 2011, 12. It was 100% vote from everybody in elementary. But when you look at TJ, I mean, that building has grown so much and changed. 50% of the staff weren't here five years ago, because we only had like six on a section even, I think. We weren't very big even per grade level. So they probably think that they inherited this awful thing they don't like, but they actually picked it out. And I actually was not an advocate for it, I'll just say that right now. It was not on the state adopted list, and I didn't think it was a wise move for us. But I was in my first year, and we actually made Mount Daniel change. And that's probably why Mount Daniel had one system and TJ had a different. And the thought was they needed to have the same series K5. So it was a big, it was a big deal for you guys to change.
And I think even with Benchmark, our people are fine with Benchmark now. I think it's about how you utilize the resource that is causing that discrepancy with the same process and the same resource. We use it differently than TJ does. We use Jan Richardson and her professional development to guide our instruction, and Benchmark is a resource. And from what I understand with what they've done so far at Thomas Jefferson is kind of the opposite. They see Benchmark as the whole resource, and teachers are finding it's just not enough. So that's part of what we want to work on with our grant, to have Jan come more times next year. But I think that that could be part of that discrepancy, too.
And it had been a long time since we actually had adopted language arts, balanced literacy materials. And so it had been kind of a plethora of putting things together. And so I, and resources would just be purchased and you used them if you want. And so I think when we purchased and adopted Benchmark literacy as our balanced literacy resource, people thought it would still be the same, use it if you want. But the amount of money that the division paid for these materials, we need to use them as a, as a resource in our classroom to meet the needs of our students. And they, they are, you know, research based. And, and so I think that was one of the things that we said when writing. If we choose it, we have to use it. And so people knew that if we, if we spend the money, we need to really use the resources. So I think that may be the, the one comment that was a little bit different, that make sure we choose something that will be beneficial, or we shouldn't choose, we should keep looking. So I think, and I mean, and we're always continually growing. And we'll continue to, you know, tweak the process as we go, go forward and make sure everyone feels an active member of the engagement.
Sorry to be in the fly, I mean, it's going longer, but I, I love data. So one of the things that was interesting to me, because the, obviously TJ pulled down the average on the first two a little bit. But even for GM and MEH, for the first two categories, we're at or a little below the average in Fairfax. So for both the last two surveys in Fairfax, they were at 84, a little below or a little above for all those. And I, you know, it's, Fairfax may not be the best example, because it's such a larger school system. But I'm, you know, Mount Daniel pulls this up, of course. But I'm, I'm a little interested to see, you know, how we do in comparison to smaller school systems on those items.
And I think, too, part of that is Fairfax has done it for so long. And when you go in and you read all the tail data, every time you take it, you tend to go up. And actually Alexandria is, if you look at their 2014 and their 2016 that they just took in May, it's, it's amazing how many points they went up. And I think it's because, what we were saying earlier, you know what's target, kind of what's important and how to, what to address. So it'll be interesting to see when you give it again, and the principals all know what the feedback was, will you see that change next year?
I do think the sample size is a huge thing. There's one slide that we got, I think it was a 92%, and I was like, that's got to be one person. Who was that, you know? Because I only gave out 23 codes. So I do think it's probably more people in Fairfax that disagree with that statement. But percentage wise, it, it doesn't quite measure up. And then the last one is devising teaching techniques, how much control the teachers feel they have over that. And again, at GM, MEH, and Mount Daniel, very high, higher at TJ. But I think that's still some, some work to be done in that area for them. The teachers are saying they want a little more autonomy, I think. So then these are some areas that were low in each of the schools. So those would be potential areas of focus to discuss at the site. So teachers have time available to collaborate with colleagues. That's something that was high at MEH. And I think they've always said they feel like they have time, because you have made that a priority.
Well, we have common planning built into our schedule. And then this year, we also added department meetings every month. And so in order for us to build that vertical alignment piece, once a month, all the science teachers across grade levels, six, seven, and eight, were given time to meet and, and work on curriculum. Now, part of that was driven because of our NYPD approach. A lot of it was driven because of the need to have those discussions and develop unit planners. And so that's kind of a successful byproduct of the NYPD framework and what the asks are of that program. So we can't take all the credit, but we do, we have tried to make sure that teachers have that time. So that's really the reason why it's where it is.
And something at the elementary level, we have common planning as much as we are able. But there are only five specials and eight to 10 teachers per grade. So you just, you don't get that common planning time during the school day with a system like this, and we never will. And I guarantee that our teachers, they like to all meet together. They have common planning with half of their team, but through PYP, you make the decision with the whole team. So that's why our Wednesdays are so important. That's the only time that they have to all sit down and meet together. So I would love to give them more time, but.
I think that is a point of frustration.
I cannot do that in a building.
I think it is a point of frustration. Mount Daniel's only been like that for, what, is this her third year? Yeah, that, when they were tiny and you didn't have as many sections, then you still had your five specials. So you actually could have common planning. And they, they went through the change the year before last, and TJ really has not done it yet. And this next year, I think will be the first year they've got to have sub teams, or they just can't run their schedule.
And in some places like Fairfax, I mean, they have large schools because they're K to five, but they have four to five teachers per grade level. So that's something that our schedule just isn't going to allow. So those Wednesdays are very important for, for them to have any. Efforts are made to minimize the amount of routine paperwork teachers are required to do. I think that's, I mean, always something we can prove on, but always something that's going to be there. It would be interesting to see what routine paperwork they are thinking is in excess. You know, what is just routine that they could get rid of, that they're not continually growing professionally? We talked a little bit about the evaluation applications for IB and that being a lot of paperwork, but certainly wasn't routine, and it was a very big growing experience. So they may have seen that as important, even though we had to do it. And I think the support that you give to them in completing some of that paperwork is important, too. And this school.
I'll actually go, I'll speak a little on MEH, since we're under 50%, and provide a little context there. I have had an opportunity to speak with some teachers about how they interpreted that question and, and what their response was. At MEH this year, we've made a concerted effort to have our teachers document interactions between students. Part of our positive behavior supports and ways that we can try and, you know, help students make the right decisions and also know or be able to head off potential issues. And so our teachers have been asked to document a lot more than, than they ever have before. And I know that plays into that, because it is considered routine paperwork, because it's just, it's just an understanding that that's what, what, you know, they're being asked to do. And so that's, that contributes to that number. I won't say that's the whole reason, but I know that that was mentioned by multiple people as how they viewed that question and why they responded the way that they did. Having said that, a very large majority of them said, I recognize it's a necessary thing to do. I just don't like doing it. I wish there was an easier way to do it.
Exactly.
I think you could do some adjustments here. I was, I was looking before on this, too. And Fairfax was at 62 for efforts, but 78 for teachers have enough time. So there's an overall adjustment around there. I'm actually more concerned about the top line than the second line, because we are, you know, MEH was the only place that was a little above the average in Fairfax on time available to collaborate, whereas, you know, two schools were a little above the average and two schools a little, more than a little below. But it just, and I've certainly heard teachers that more, I have heard more concerns about the first item when I talk with teachers as opposed to the second.
Yes, I would agree with that, too.
I think the interesting thing, and I think it's the difference, too, is when you're inside a system, because, and I just know, my husband teaches in Fairfax, so does Tom's. We have more collaboration time and plan time. And his elementary, I'm not sure what hers is like, but it's, I know when we've talked about this and people that have been there, we actually have more collaboration and plan than what most of the schools have in Fairfax County, unless you're in a block schedule high school. They tend to look the same, but even at the elementary level. So it's fascinating, because I think for us, part of it is we've, we've changed as our sections have gotten bigger. And it's that, that common is what you really consider collaboration. And that's become, not impossible, but without adding a tremendous amount of staff at elementary, we're going to struggle to get there again where we used to be. And I think that's been hard for us.
Sure, Lawrence, you had a question?
Well, this may seem like a silly question, but what is considered non-routine paperwork? I mean, I can't imagine how much of that there could be. I'm just trying to figure out if the word routine looks like it means something when it really doesn't. I mean, what's, what's non-routine?
I mean, I think anything can be.
Russell was routine. But I don't, I don't know.
I think that the frequency of that routine is probably what this question is getting at.
Well, and have you automated report cards? You know, there are a lot of school districts across the country where you're still doing your, like, report cards by hand. I mean, and that paperwork is enormous. If you haven't automated your grading, if you don't have a grade book, big difference if you're not automated, so.
But that would, that's another question, was, does paperwork literally mean paper? As opposed to doing something online as opposed to paper?
And I would probably say that one of the things that hopefully our new system, interactive achievement, will help as far as data. The system will actually allow us to upload data into the system, where right now, teachers in grade levels are creating spreadsheets to progress monitor students. So one of the things we hope for next year is because we have a system that we can pull the data from various places, teachers won't have to maintain those same spreadsheets to be able to see how students are growing over time. So hopefully, that will be another thing that they probably referring to as far as routine paperwork, is just collecting data on kids through our RTI.
Because currently, like, when you have the data, you put it in the report card. But then, since we don't have a system that does that, then the teachers also have to enter that into a site-based spreadsheet, so we can analyze the data. So they're having to do basically the same thing twice, because we didn't have a system for it. So I think that's the type of thing they're referring to, is it cumbersome and perhaps unnecessary.
Okay, I just wouldn't want somebody to say, well, this is now online, so you can't count it as paperwork.
Yeah, no, I don't think that that's.
That would be fair going forward.
Automated would be helpful.
Right.
If they're entering it in a computer, yeah, we have very few things that are actually done.
Yeah, I mean, I read that to mean data entry, whether electronic or, but, but it's interesting. Is that, is that a question of communication, that there's just not an explanation, for example, of the student interaction and its importance? So that it's, is that saying people want to have more of an understanding why they're being asked to do things? So that once you do explain it, they'll say, oh, okay, I get this.
We've spent a lot of time this year discussing reasons why. And I think if you were to go to the building and ask, why, why are the administrators asking you to do this? Pretty much everyone can tell you. Doesn't mean that they're okay with having to do it. And so, and that's where we're at, because it is, it's, it's extra work. And if you have a class with a handful of kids that you're having to continually write things about or reflect on or just be more observant, it, I mean, it is going to add, you know, to, to your load. And we've, we've also heard, heard that, too, that, you know, I don't know if it's fair that, because I have this, this class and I have, you know, some, some kids that just like to do certain things, and I'm asked to, you know, keep track of that. I don't, that's, that's more for me than for this person. I mean, it's, it's the same, and this is going to take a step.
It's like if you're a co-teacher, you get a lot more paperwork.
Right.
If you're a co-teacher and in those situations.
Exactly, and, right.
Which, another sort of related question is the professional development? Which, another sort of related question is the, the professional development. I, I know it's not the same thing, but as a lawyer, I have to take professional development courses, and I'm not sure I'd want to be evaluated and have my results communicated. Is that, is that saying normatively teachers are wanting more of that or is that simply a statement of fact that I do my professional development and that's the end of it?
I take it as the, I take it as the professional development opportunity itself is actually evaluated by effectiveness.
Like, was it a good.
Like, teachers are asked, you know, was this a good thing?
Was the presenter helpful?
Oh, so it's a kind of quality control.
Right, right.
Because we have not been doing it, like, where you do like an exit ticket at the end of every professional development and vet if the trainer was good. We do it personally, I think that's what the principals were saying, you go around and have those discussions, but not.
There's no formal system for it, yeah. Like, I could tell you what they thought of the professional development we did this year, but I have not communicated it to all of them necessarily, and there's no system for getting that feedback from everyone. So I think that that one is a very good idea because if we're saying we want more, well, we want to make sure that what we're spending our money on is worth it.
Right.
And I think that follow-up from professional development too, unfortunately, a lot of the models for these presenters are, you bring in a person and they're there for a day or two and then they leave, and a lot of that follow-up, if you're having someone come in and talk about something that you don't have an expert at your school that can then continue that learning, then it's contingent on the presenter's availability. And if they're not willing to continue the conversation, then you need to find a way to sustain that in your building. And we were lucky this year, our number is a little higher than the others in this area that we had a presenter that was able to come back multiple times and then video conference with our teachers, so they did feel that ongoing, but next year if we didn't have her come back, I don't know that our number would look the same.
And so for us, I can tell you that 31 and 30 directly relates to our NYPD efforts in the sense that we did not have a standalone NYPD coordinator, we do now, thank you, and that, that number's going to go way up as a result. But what ended up happening is we had to be creative with how we provided professional development to our staff. And the reality was, a lot of the things that we were needing to train them on, they had very, very little exposure to at all. I mean, we're still, we're still in the candidacy phase and everything, and so we would bring in these high quality, high-quality, high-caliber instructors, but to Aaron's point, once they left, well, there are a lot of questions that we need to ask and they want more money to answer those questions, you know? And we didn't have someone in-house at the time that could be like, oh, well, I, I know what they're, what they're going to tell you. And now we do. And so those, those two numbers specifically, that 31 and 30 is directly related to the NYPD piece, because I can tell you that for certain because 95% of our professional development was NYPD-related. That's where we've been putting all of our eggs to make sure that we are, you know, doing this the right way, the appropriate way, our teachers are getting the training that they need so that they can be successful. And, and that was the feedback that they gave. They're like, you know, that person was great, can we get them back? No? Okay, well, what do we do now? You know? And it was, it was really more, it ended up being a lot on the high school, the DP, you know, coordinator, Kelly, who's an unbelievable job balancing, you know, between the two schools, but, you know, she had many other things to do. And so it certainly helps that, that we now have someone that has the pedagogy background, that has the experience and can help us in the areas that we need.
I do think though, in terms of professional development, teachers are all lifelong learners, so they're never going to say it's enough. You know, we can give them more and then they're going to want to go and learn something else, which is fantastic, and those are the kind of people that we want working for us, but I think that if those numbers were ever 100%, then I would be worried that they don't want to grow anymore.
Yeah, I think it's a hundred.
So I think that we need to always push them to learn new things and look for new experiences because that's how we make our schools better. And then the last one was information and input on how the budget will be spent. Those numbers were lower as well, and I think that that was kind of a theme this spring about school-based and division-based budgets that they don't feel like they understand, and maybe it's because they didn't think they needed to before, but that's where they're feeling right now. So this one, overall school sites, the statement was, overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. And we had very high agreement in three of the schools and actually a higher number for TJ than some of the other standards. So I do think that, you know, that was a positive for everybody, that most people feel like it's, it's a good place to be and that there is a strong level of agreement in that at the majority of the school sites, I think can be considered a positive for us, and we will help figure out how to make it better for that one person. And so then this is for that statement, the comparison to other divisions. So compared to Alexandria, they were at 71%. So three of our schools were above that. Fairfax was 87 and Massachusetts was 84, so most of our schools are doing pretty good. If you look at our average as a division, we have some work to do compared to Fairfax, but I think that we're not too far off from where we need to be in most places, but that it's a, it's a team effort and that we need to figure out how to all sustain and help each other out because we are small.
And can I just point out, if you try to average GM, MEH, TJ and Mount Daniel, doesn't it work to get that 84.7? Because your system-wide folks are in there, so that's, that's our division-wide number. Yeah.
So factory, I mean, yeah, factory would be in there.
It's just a mixture, it's spattering.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that was it, right? You didn't add another one on the end.
No, no, no. Some of them.
So other questions or thoughts, comments? I guess one question is, so what happens next?
So I can tell you that at MEH, so this was, this was a teacher, it was called a teacher climate survey, but it really wasn't necessarily a teacher climate survey. We are administering this week the NSCC survey, the same one that TJ and GM took earlier as I promised, you know, our community that we would do. And it will be open to, you know, teachers, students and parents. And what we will do with that data as well as this is really start with our, with our PTA. This year we started a school climate advisory committee. It was a small group, there were a handful of parents, a handful of students, counselor and administrators. We met, we met twice. With the more focused effort, we're going to, we're going to run it through the PTA. We feel like that's really where it should be taking place. And so we're going to have monthly meetings to discuss school climate going into next year, meet with the leadership team and we'll go over these results and identify areas that we need to grow and, and develop an action plan for everything that we see. But, you know, we've, we've been talking about this as a staff and, you know, they're ready and, and already have staff volunteers that want to be a part of it, that represent a wide range from, you know, our newer teachers to veterans, people that live actually in this community and outside of the community. So we kind of have a good representation for all of that within our staff and, and obviously having the PTA as part of it. Anybody that's a member of the PTA is technically a member of the, of the climate committee, so.
But we will dig in this summer as an admin team. We, when we met, we met by building, so, you know, they met individually, so they're only looking at their own results for our first meeting, but we'll go in and really look at them this summer and, and see, you know, what are those areas that we can focus on? There's a lot of information in there. It's about 14 pages of indicators, so it's a lot of information.
On anything for me, it's a great place to start because I'm inheriting some, I'm very lucky to be inheriting some strong data, so I certainly don't want to see it dip by any means. So if we're not going to continue this for next year, then I'll want to find another way to measure how the teachers are feeling throughout the transition because the reality of the situation is, most of them have only ever worked for Mrs. Halaico, so it is going to be different for them, and I want to make sure that this is still how they're feeling at, at the end of next year, that 92% of them still think it's a good place to work and learn, ideally 100. But I think that sharing the successes from our results is important. At all the schools, there were strengths, and I think that that's a good place to start, especially with TJ, with Mr. Swanson coming in, you know, find what was a strength for them and then share the weaknesses and, well, how can we help fix this together? What do we want to tackle this year? I mean, for us, I think it would be what do we want to tackle this year because we didn't have that many areas that were of large concern and how are we going to go about doing it? But I think that they should see these results and that they should have access to it because they, in our building, they took it very seriously and they spent a lot of time thoughtfully answering the questions because they wanted it to be true to how they actually feel, so we appreciate you supporting.
I would love to be a part of any meeting, any discussions, just so, from this level, you know, from, in court to an instructional, human resource, human resources position to be able to know how we can try to meet the needs of, you know, in some of the areas that are, are areas of concern.
Yeah, we probably won't do it before the end of this year, not going to lie, but it'll be out there if somebody talks about it, but we're out until Thursday. Two and a half days. We're going to be doing some celebrating in the next two and a half days with Halaico, so we're not going to.
One of the other things that we're focusing on next year is we do have teacher leaders in the curriculum instructional resource teachers, and we have a few new people this year, and so as I've met with, with the people who are coming in brand new, I've just really talked about making sure that we keep our lines of communication open and to, you know, be open and honest with me if there is something in their content area that's going on in their building that they have a concern about. If it's something that they think is happening, ask me. If I know the answer, we'll give, you know, give an open and honest answer. So I just hope that that too will help with some of the, the areas that may have been addressed here. And so they, they said, oh, great, I'll look forward to doing that. And so we're excited about that.
And thank you again for being here at 9:45. We appreciate you very much.
Of course.
We know you start early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for coming on and look forward to taking these results and making things better, so thank you.
Thanks for having us.
All right, so with that, we are adjourned.